I will call our work session to order, being held in the Richfield Municipal Center, Bethel Me Room again. And we have one item on our agenda that is a presentation of the 2022 revised 2023 proposed budget and tax levy, and I will pass it to our city manager, Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a reminder, we're, yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna try and do first names tonight. But I just wanted to say a few words before I hand it off to Kamud. This was a tough budget for many reasons. However, I feel it represents significant progress, and I think it's a good balance of needed investments and also, you know, keeping in mind our limited resources. I also feel we know a lot more about where we're at financially and where we need to go. And we haven't solved all of our challenges, but we have good prioritized plans and good people working on it. One of the reasons the budget was tough is because we're in transition in the finance department and still short staff throughout the city. And Kamud came on just, just as we were kicking off the budget to lead the finance department. It was, staff were wonderful. We were really candid that it was gonna be a bumpy process, and I feel like people were really good with sharing information with their colleagues. And, and my favorite memory was actually Jamie Mizer in the police department and Jay teaching budget school to anyone that needed a little extra help. So I just want to say thank you to everyone for your patience, for your good work and collaboration on the budget. I also want to say thanks to council. Thank you for your clear guidance so we could put the proposed budget together. And now I will hand it off to Kamud, so she can get into the numbers.
Thanks, Katie. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members and colleagues. Today's work session starts with an overview of the timetable and key events. At the previous work session on July 26th, a preview of the 2023 budget, utility rates and fees, 2023 CIV and five-year capex plan was considered. Today, we will look at the 2022 revised budget and 2023 proposed budget. And at the September 13th meeting, the council shall adopt preliminary tax levy. TNT meeting is scheduled for December 6th with final budget and levy to be adopted in December. Key issues for 2022-23. Labor market continues to be intensively, intensely competitive. COLA increase is at 3% and average step increase is at 5%. Salary and benefit accounts for 70% of general fund expenses. City has added $10 million of new debt in 2022 to finance the 65th Street reconstruction. Debt service cost added $428,000 to the 2023 levy. Inflationary pressure continues to push goods and services prices up, so that continues to remain a concern. Moving on to the next one, 2023 local government aid is going to have a slight increase of 1.38% or $28,000 over, over the year 2022. City would get an additional $90,000 in LGA if the stalled tax bill gets, picks, picks up over there. Some of the revenue streams, for examples, passport fee and fines, recreation revenue are not going to be at the pre-pandemic levels. City has budgeted EDA levy at $579,000, representing a 4% increase over 2022. Historically, EDA levy has, has increased by roughly $5,000 annually. City is proposing a 6.6% levy increase in 2023. We compared the proposed levy increase with other metro cities and found that in, that on an averaging, that on an average levy increase of 7.56% is what we see across the cities that, that were sampled or surveyed. City of Bloomington and Lakeville preliminary numbers are in double digits, between 10% to 12%. Edina is at 9.5%, Burnsville at 14.5%, and Eden Prairie at 4.5%. 2022 general fund revenues has, have been revised down $88,000 at $27.78 million. As shared earlier in the previous session, the change is primarily due to the service charges, including passport fee and recreation programs, which were originally budgeted, hoping of full recovery from pandemic in 2022, but of course, that did not happen yet. Please note that a significant portion of the lower recreation program revenue is offset by decrease in recreation program expenditure. And here is a pie showing different slices of city's general fund revenue. The percentages in blue font are in parenthesis represent 2022 numbers and 2023 percentages are in red font. Taxes with a 73% share continues to be primary funding source for the general fund operations. Next major sources, local government aid and other intergovernmental revenues at 13%. Other revenue sources have a single-digit share. Here we have a comparative analysis of expenditure of all departments and divisions. Revised 2022 expenditure is estimated at $27.78 million, which is, which is about 0.3% or $88,000 lower than the original adopted 2022 budget. Expense savings fully offsets the impact of revised lower revenue. Savings have been reflected across all department except for finance, which is currently in the rebuilding phase due to staffing changes. City has added three staff positions in 2022 revised and the budget, and the additional staffing cost will be fully offset or expected to be fully offset by the lower overtime cost in the fire department and the elimination of a supervisor position in recreation services. On the next slide, we have a pie of the general fund expenditure. Public safety is at the top with 39% share, followed by fire and public works at 18% and 17% respectively. Recreation, admin services, community development, executive, finance, all remain under 10% of the total expenditure. Again, 2023 percentages are in red font and 2022, 2022 share is in blue font. And here is a detail, a detailed levy calculation totaling $26.7 million. I would pause here for a second to be sure if anyone has any question, I have a chance to answer that. None, moving on. Here is how 2023 proposed levy increase compares to the past levy. We are proposing 6.6% now, and historically, it has been in the range of upper fours, 5, This is an interesting graph showing tax capacity, city levy, and tax rate since 2016. You can see the city's taxable tax capacity continues to grow, but the tax rate is comparatively down.
Ben, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I think we asked this previously and didn't have a number, and so I should have sent this ahead of time. How much of the increased tax capacity is the new development versus how much is just all of the property values going up? Do we know that?
Go ahead, Katie. It was 1.5% of the tax capacity was new construction.
Okay. And how, 1.5% of the total or of the increase?
1 and, 1.5% of the, of the increase is due to new construction.
Okay, so mostly, I guess I'm just...
It's mostly market value.
Okay.
Market value gains.
Okay, cuz then I, partially my mind, I know I talked with you about this, but my mind is going to like, what, what is the message we communicate to folks? And I think the, the message of your taxes would have gone down if your property value stayed the same is a little bit feels false or hiding the truth in that most of why our tax rate went down is because they're, anyway, so that, that is helpful to know that that's driving it mostly.
Yeah, and I, there's a nice chart in the assessment report from Hennepin County that gives the different communities and what it, their new construction percentage is. And the other color communities to Minneapolis were all normally over, under 1%. So Richfield did comparatively well in terms of adding new construction to the tax base. And I, I do understand your point about that. But on the other hand, there's lots of taxes that are just rates. And if, for example, if incomes go up, then income taxes go, are more for the state and for the federal government. So it is that we are, we are not keeping our tax rate flat, we're actually bringing it down. So it is, it is worth pointing out, I think, but I appreciate that it's a complicated argument as well, or, or point, I shouldn't say it's an argument.
Thank you, Katie.
Katie, moving on to the next slide, this shows impact of levy increase on the average Richfield home. In 2022, average city tax per household was $1,428. The average home increased in value by 15.9% this year from $2,666,000 to $308,000. The proposed levy would increase per household annual taxes estimated at $129 annually. Because, because city's tax rate is decreasing, the taxes would actually decrease by nearly $80 if the home value stayed the same at $266,000 this year. But for most, if not all, home values increased since last year. The, the table at the bottom of this slide provides a comparison of estimated tax base, estimated tax based on average market value of homes at 302,000 and 308,000. Under the two scenarios, the annual estimated tax increase over 2022 tax on average household would be $99 and $129 respectively. On a monthly basis, this would mean an increase of $8.25 and $10.79 per average home.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. So in, in that same Hennepin County assessment report, there's, they provide the average value of a single-family home as 308,000, but then they also give the 13.5 increase for those homes that are homesteaded. So that's why it's helpful to provide both the figures.
Okay, thank you.
There is 10 years of history of state aid dollars that city has received. This is a, the, LGA is a very unstable revenue source. In 2021, you could see that the revenue went down by 364,000 compared to the previous year, and it is, it is due to decertification of two TIF districts around that timeframe. Forecast of city reserves, city plan to gradually bring the ICERNA and pool out of the red with annual transfers from the capital reserve funds. We also plan to use the funds to smooth out property tax increases with a $500,000 transfer in 2023 that declines to zero in 2026. There is a one-time transfer planned in 2027 to bridge one year of debt service payment for an expiring bond in order for the Nicorette project to proceed in 2026. Even with all of these planned transfers, the capital reserve balance is expected to be between $2.5 to $3 million in 2028. We have concerns around the continued use of reserves with no plan to replenish them, and we intend to develop a more, more detailed, long-term plan to determine appropriate targets for the reserve funds.
Mary.
So this kind of ties into reserves, but if we, if we decertify more TIF districts, which is gonna be happening in the next few years, do we expect to get to zero local government aid? Since we took a big hit in the past when we decertified?
Katie.
You, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So in the, the key financial strategies document, for the three TIFs that decertify in 2025, it's about 370,000. And, and again, it's a really complicated formula, but there's a circuit breaker so that if your tax base grows very quickly, like when you decertify major TIFs, then it will, it will only reduce by this certain amount. So we expect, and again, complicated formula cuz it depends on statewide market values and everything else. It, we expect three years of 370,000 reductions, so going to about a million eventually. And then we do have other TIFs decertifying, so we'll have to work with the research staff to see what the impact of that will be. But yes, it's conceivable that as our tax base grows, that we will eventually go to zero with LGA, and that's how the program's designed.
All right, thank you.
An overview of the 23 proposed general fund budget. The general fund increase is less than the past few years. Currently, we are projecting a 3.86% increase, and the average increase has been, since 2016, it has been 4.04%. Considering the inflationary pressure and the tight labor market, this is a modest increase. The 2022 revised budget decreased slightly, mostly due to unfilled positions. 2023 budget is 4.19% higher than the 2022 revised budget. Here is a history of city's general fund. The graph shows increase in city's general fund expenditure since 2018. The 2023 proposed increase at 3.86% is lower than the historical average, which was 4.04%. Talking about the staffing update, city is adding two firefighter positions, but the impact of the budget is mostly absorbed by the less overtime cost. We are also turning a part-time position into a full-time position in recreation area to provide a manager position at the community center. The additional personal cost will be absorbed by elimination of supervisor position in And this is city's long-term financial forecast, also known as KFS document that we shared with you at the last meeting. There are two different versions of this forecast analyzing two scenarios where Woodlake, Woodlake Nature Center, I'm sorry, is financed with a new bond issue versus raising, raising the funds with the use of a local sales tax. We have updated the plan since the last meeting and shared it with the council and the directors. So I wanna pause here and ask if anyone has any question about this document.
Any questions? Ben?
Just to confirm, we still have a full work session to discuss? Okay, yeah, I'm fine waiting then.
Thank you. Continuing with the long-term financial forecast, we made progress on the forecast and the current version of the KFS document out there is more stable and realistic. We intend to take a more in-depth review of the KFS, and as part of the strategic planning initiative, city's debt policy will also be reviewed to make sure it adequately addresses the core policy areas. City still has unfunded capital needs. We are scheduled to present options and the process for a local option sales tax at the council meeting on September 27th. Any proposed franchise fee increase is likely to be very modest. With that, I would pause again and see if there are any questions.
Looks like none.
If not, then I would like to invite the city manager to present the next slides. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you so much for that presentation.
So I won't go into a lot of detail cuz we just discussed this in detail at our July 26th work session. The city was awarded just under $4 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds, or ARPA. The directors submitted proposals for projects. At one point, they totaled like $13 million. We then used this criteria to rank the projects and came up with a proposal for council. At that meeting, there was some interest in exploring additional funding for sustainability projects. This was the project that Recreation Director Merkel and also Sustainability Specialist Rachel Lindholm came up with, and it's $50,000 to do energy efficiency and usage audits for our city-owned buildings. And then the audits aren't a lot of money, but then there's money to implement some of the recommendations. And it may not be sufficient to, to implement all of them, but it'll give us a roadmap going forward for future improvements. So I'm just gonna pause there to see if there's questions, and of course, Amy's here, she's the expert on this.
I think our mayor stepped out, so I'll just jump in. I'm, I know I was one of the people pushing strongly for this. I mean, this seems exciting to me, it seems like a doable, without a huge price tag, but getting us started proposal. Do we, when I worked at a church, we got one of these, and so I think I have a sense of some of the things that might end up suggesting, like LED lighting, when, like better insulated windows. But like, I guess, do you have more of a list of what things we might expect could come out of this?
That's a good question, Ben. We met with our partners in energy team last week, and we went through, I think there's 15 municipal buildings that are on the list that would be audited. And just kind of real preliminarily, meeting with them and talking about how the process works, you know, it's things potentially like, some of our older buildings having computerized thermostats that will turn down the buildings at temperatures at night would be a big one. Some of the things you mentioned, you know, as well as just changing out lights, retrofitting some things. So the $42,000, you know, we'll make it go as far as we can, but at least we'll know what we can be doing and potentially budgeting for in the future to make our buildings more efficient.
And then this would be the recommended list, and we plan to bring this to council for their consideration for final approval at your September 13th council meeting. And if there are any questions or feedback.
I guess I was hoping other council members would say, I'm, I'm curious, since I was the one who initially prompted revisiting a, a new idea, are others in support of this? Does it seem worth pursuing? Are people more interested in the full amount for the EAB program?
Sean?
Yeah, I'm in support of the project. I, my only suggestion would just be like, it seems like a good kind of example thing for the community, and it'd be nice for us to like maximize communications about, we did this thing on a city scale of looking at our buildings, and this is available to residents and so on. Cuz a lot of this, the benefit of this is not just saving energy directly, but being an example to the community. So I support it with that suggestion.
Mary?
From what it sounded like, there is gonna be sufficient funds for the Emerald Ash Bar, so I think this is a good use of the $50,000.
I think it's great. I appreciate, I appreciate you raising the, the concern, and I appreciate staff identifying something I think was exactly what we're looking, not, not performative, really useful, and something that we can leverage in the future, so good work.
All right.
If I could...
Yep, go ahead, Ben.
I really like what Sean was saying, but also would add in businesses. And I wonder too if, I know there's a, a lot in the works for the economic development stuff, but I wonder if having, I don't know what the cost would be, but some sort of program in the future, maybe this is just an idea. But I know like we subsidize Home Energy Squad visits for homeowners. I wonder about, I know Pi has done some stuff with business owners, but if there's options there to leverage this, knowing that commercials, businesses, their footprint is much larger.
I think we have a program already, right?
Oh, we do.
Ben, we do, we do have a program that does that, and it's through CEE, and it's very successful.
Okay, looks like we're good. All right, we can keep going.
Okay, well, I will hand it over. I do wanna say thank you for the suggestions, and based on feedback from staff, we, we feel like this is a, a better list.
We're changing it up this year, so I'm not last. I'm pretty excited. I told the other directors that now we sit there for hours anxious, so now I get to go first, so I'm pretty excited. So good evening, Mayor, Council, and colleagues. Here's the recreation services budget, the kind of goals, objectives, and updates for the coming year. Just to remind everyone, an overview of our department, we have different divisions. We have our admin bid, division, our recreation programs, and then the Woodlake Nature Center. And looking at our overall budget, we are in our admin department going to see a pretty big jump, it's 22.45%. But we'll kind of get into the reasoning for that. We see a little bit of a decrease in our recreation programs, and Woodlake Nature Center, you know, a really healthy increase, you know, aligned with inflation and, and the general cost of things going up. Our revenues are decreased in recreation overall. I think we haven't seen a significant bounce back after the pandemic. We're seeing, kind of just looking at the needs of the community, we're hearing a lot more of a need for family programming versus, you know, as much of the energy and resources we had going into things like softball leagues and athletics. So we are trying to do more family-style programming. I think that is not perhaps as profitable. We are seeing an increase in revenue, so at Woodlake Nature Center, it tends to, you know, did really well in the pandemic, I believe, cuz it's mainly outdoors, and it's really stayed strong since. Some of the notes in our department, our expenditures are increased due to the promotion. We have an executive analyst position that was promoted. Our sustainability specialist position will be promoted in the new year. And that moved over from the Woodlake budget over to the admin budget, which is just a lot cleaner and transparent. It's, a lot of grants are involved with the sustainability program. And our recycling budget helps fund the sustainability specialist position, it will continue to for, for many years. About 40% of that position is paid through Hennepin County. In our recreation programs, some of the notes include lower revenue forecasts. Again, we're seeing a decrease in adult sports, fitness, some of our senior day-out trips, and some of that still, I think, is COVID-related. A lot of them involve getting on a bus with seniors, and they're still apprehensive, I think, to, to do that. We also removed, moved our farmer's market vendor reimbursements, our token sales, out of our general fund. Our expenditures will be about 4.8% lower than budgeted, and 1.6% lower next year due to the farmer market vendor reimbursements, moving out of the general fund, as well as unfilled seasonal intermittent positions that we just couldn't fill due to the, the challenging labor market. We also had a part-time recreation supervisor retire today after 31 years. Mary Kay Champa retired, so she will be missed, yeah. The position won't be filled, there is a need for a recreation manager position, so a lot of that staff cost will be absorbed through that retirement. Some budget notes regarding Woodlake Nature Center, our forecast is gonna be remaining steady due to considering strong participation. I mean, you know, reflecting on our summer there, almost every single camp was full with a waiting list. Our weekend classes are extremely busy. Birthday parties are booked out months in advance, so it tends to, you know, be a very popular place to program. Our expenditures will see a 4% increase, and, and that's mainly just due to the cost of materials and, and services increasing overall. Some of the highlights for our admin department, we've been working hard on replacing play equipment, both at Christian and Fremont Parks. Next year, I believe it will be next year due to the supply chain kind of being backed up. But next spring, we'll be installing new equipment at both Sheridan and Monroe Parks. We implemented our organized hauling program, and we've worked out a lot of the kinks with that, and it's been going very well. We've been working hard on our Woodlake building project, and we are still hopeful to put together a solid financial plan to get that project underway. Some of the other special projects that we are working on include a Taft Bike Park... White and Blue Days Committee, and also our Friends at Wood Lake. So any given night, we are meeting with community and, and working hard with residents to, you know, to do great things. Some of the highlights, our farmer's market has seen the greatest increase of any program I think I've seen in the last several years. Each week, we're over 2,500 people. A typical Saturday a year ago was 1,600, so we're almost 1,000 people higher. Bonnie has just been knocking it out of the park with additional programming such as yoga every week, science at the market, lots of the special things that she does to make it a unique experience for, for families. We've also been working hard educating ourselves about accessibility and making sure we're inclusive as possible to the community. We're excited, the new brochure that will be out to families any day has a lot more information about inclusion services and making sure people know, you know, everyone's able to participate in programming. We also added a lot more information on our website as well.
I had a couple of questions. Could you just go back to the last page?
Yeah.
Please, thank you. Okay, so for the commissions and the group support, I don't have the answer to that, but just really thinking, that's a lot of groups that you're helping staff and, and contribute to and just thinking of the work of that, those groups, making sure it's effective time, utilization of time. Do all of them still make sense to keep as a city commission, some of them who are commissioned? So just, I know that can be a hard thing to do, but really, I know that it takes a lot of staff time in making sure that that's really time well spent in supporting our staff in that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Any other questions? Okay. All right, some of the highlights this past year at Wood Lake Nature Center, you're definitely just overall programming. It's a unique site that we're able to connect everyone to the outdoors. We have put a lot of time into our natural resources there. We finished out Prairie Grant that we got through the Minnesota DNR, doing a lot of Prairie management. This past month, we've been working hard doing purple loosestrife management, so we've been working hard to kind of rid a lot of the invasive species there. And also just working with our Friends at Wood Lake, raising funds to, to help with a lot of the special needs there. And we'll have our fundraising dinner coming up in October. Some of the goals of continuing to look at additional revenue streams that would help support our capital improvement budget, coordinating department-wide training specific to equity in our field, to make sure all staff are on the same page and that we're looking at programming and what we do through an equity lens. Looking in the coming year at a facility assessment, and we've started inventorying facilities and really looking at the condition and understanding what makes sense and working with residents to, to understand what makes sense reinvesting in and renovating versus maybe tearing something down and doing something different or nothing at all. We want to prioritize our climate action plan and in conjunction with our sustainability commission and look at, you know, what are our top priorities that we can do in, in our capacity? And also do education with the climate action plan, both internally and externally, so our staff and community understand this document and the importance and the work involved. We also want to increase general sustainability education, both formally and informally. So opportunities, you know, at farmer's market, Wood Lake Nature Center, where we already have captive audiences. Overall goals, we want to continue to, you know, provide programming to a lot of our underserved populations. We're very excited, our brochure that's going out right now, it's our first brochure that's completely translated into Spanish. So if you go online, it's, it's all translated. The one that is mailed out, it's probably like 75% done that was printed. We want to continue to secure grants, work with our partners to help, you know, achieve our goals with facilities and programming. A great example is we have our Learn to Fish program last weekend, this week out at TAF with three rivers park districts. We've had lots of kids catching lots of sunnies, having a good time and learning how to fish. We want to continue in partnership with Public Works to assess our city facilities and assets and make, kind of roll that into our strategic plan and our capital improvement planning. Continue to implement hires, hiring solutions. We've done some bonuses and year-end bonuses with our seasonal staff and it's worked well. So continue to explore incentives to attract and retain our seasonal staff to do what we do. And also expand programming over at Veterans Park, because we have such a big captive audience there. Every Saturday, are there opportunities, you know, to do more with arts, music, nature? A lot of people are there, so there may be opportunities there to do more. I would like Nature Center, we want to make sure that we're continuing to manage the park for the biodiversity that's there, assessing some of the programs that we added during COVID that were popular, you know, what stays and what will go back to more of a traditional style program. And then we want to work with our friends group, hopefully to really partner with the new building and fundraising and raising awareness and advocacy for that project. Some future considerations, we need to develop a long range funding plan for our capital needs and we're working with Kamud and Katie on that and exploring different opportunities we may have to help. You know, a lot of our park facilities were built in the 60s, early 70s, and they're all kind of coming to that time where they need renovation. So just making sure we have a plan for that. Continuing to raise awareness around the Wood Lake Nature Center project. We want to explore particularly with partners, how we can address some of the specific needs, learning more about lately about the, how many kids don't know how to swim. This past year, we've had at least 20 saves at the pool, which is down from last year. Working with our Safe Routes to School Coordinator, we know about 30% of Richfield youth don't know how to ride a bike and just making sure some of these skills are accessible and the opportunities are there for our kids. We also want to establish funding strategies that support the goals and objectives in the climate action plan with no designated funding for a lot of those objectives, you know, how can we achieve them through partners and grants and things like that. The other area of our budget is our special revenue funds. We'll explore that and that includes our ice arena, our pool and our special facilities. There's our part of our awesome staff. When you look at the arena budget, I know Kamud had noted, we are, you know, our fund balance is in the red, over $3 million. So we are always transferring in funds to help balance budgets each year, but we, you know, really dialing in on our seven-year plan to pay that off. So we're in the black. But, you know, overall, we're really strong with programming at the arena. We're trying to continually be creative and bringing in revenue in different ways. But it, like for every city that has an arena, it's an expensive facility to, to operate for sure. Looking at the pool budget, overall, the pool's doing really, really well. This is probably its strongest season we've had. Looking, yesterday, our pool passes, we've sold over $240,000 of pool passes. Daily admissions are close to 130,000, so it's an extremely busy summer. A lot of it has to do with the heat, but it's a popular place. It's accessible for a lot of families to cool down. So the pool is kind of flipping from being in the red to hoping next year being in the black and continues to do well. And we have our special facilities budget and this includes the pavilion and then our leases with the tree vendor around the holidays and then wheel front rentals. And, you know, that continues to do well and the way of the, both leases are, you know, there is a annual increase of at least around 5% for both. So we continue to, you know, stay in the black with those facilities. We have a pretty high demand for the pavilion rental, so we've looked at neighboring municipalities and we've proposed increase in that fee because it's going to get rented. So we're hopeful that the funds that we can bring in, we can put back into the facility as well, just to maintain it. Some notes that the revenue for 2022 and 2023 is very similar to the adapted budget at the arena, it's $10,000 higher. We've had a full season of ice rentals, events, skating lessons. Our expenditures are, you're right, where, kind of where we anticipated they would be. The pool is forecasted to be higher than budgeted, about 4.4% and 7.7% next year due to just an increase in season passes and concessions. Expenditures remain constant, you know, the cost to run all these facilities is, is quite high with chemicals for the pool, energy costs for the ice arena. So the, the costs are around 3.7% higher next year. Revenue is forecasted to, to stay steady, as we noted with the shelter, we'll probably see an increase due to our lease increases and then also just increased prices to rent the pavilion. Really, we are not going to see a big change in expenditure. It's, it's kind of where we thought it would be to maintain it. Some of the highlights that we're pretty excited about at the arena, the first one's the Little Spartan Hockey Program. This is trying to provide access and opportunity for youth to skate. I know we've seen a decrease overall in, in Richfield youth in hockey, so this is a program where all the equipment's provided and kids can come learn to skate. We also just had our National Collegiate Figure Skating Championships, so the best figure skaters from around the country were here for the weekend this past month and that was a big honor to host that. We also are really excited about the White Caps joining us. I think their first practice was scheduled yesterday. So we are doing, you know, little fixes in the building, painting and adding logo on the ice and things like that, but very excited to see that partnership grow. And then just continuing the programming that we do, we've added increased movie nights, activities such as Zumba at the Band Shell. We offer skating parties, skating lessons, things like that. Some improvements we've added, we did a lot of painting before the season opened at the pool. We're really excited, we were one of the few pools in the metro that was fully staffed. We have close to 50 lifeguards and with the seasonal hiring challenges, this was a great feat that, that we accomplished. Renee and Chris just did fantastic, trying to bring back a lot of the pool staff and Renee did all the training of the lifeguards. So just great work by them. We saw record numbers this, again, this season at the pool. We added a climbing wall, which has been really popular. We've, if you spend any time over at the pavilion, it is rented pretty much all day and all night, most days of the week. It is, it's really busy. We've had a very successful relationship with Wheel Fun and our tree vendor, so we've recently renewed our tree vendor lease for several more years and then Wheel Fun will come up, I believe in three years for that. Some of the goals with the arena, we'd like to put a plan in place to replace some of the flooring that's in our locker room. Continue to grow our partnership with the White Caps. Looking at new and innovative programming to, you know, make sure skating's accessible and to youth in Richfield, we have two grades that come every year to learn to skate, our first and fourth graders with Richfield Public Schools, so continuing with that program. And then, you know, just making sure our ice rental's available to a wide variety of different users. Our pool, we are looking at opening the zero death part of the pool earlier in the season. It doesn't take as many lifeguards to do, to do that area. I think we could get that open earlier and stay open longer. We're going to continue to plan for a splash pad through our ARPA funds. I think that, you know, through our conversations we've had in our work session, you know, one thing that I was thinking, it's really, you know, like adjusting to climate change and making sure, you know, climate change is here, that we do have a place for, for people to cool, so it's really an adaptation. I think the splash pad will, will be that place people can cool for free. We also are exploring sensitive, or some, sorry, sensory sensitive programs where we would have the pool open certain hours a week for, you know, different, different user groups that may be sensitive to loud noises and just large crowds of kids swimming. So it provides a safer and more welcoming space for them. Some of the goals, we also want to just do some overall general maintenance of the Mini Golf Building, the Shelter Rental, indoor farmer's market. One thing we're doing unique is that instead of having the winter market at the community center, we're going to be bringing it into the Mini Golf Building this winter and that will be in conjunction with the tree vendors. So it'll be like a holiday market, which will become a fun new space for that. Some of the considerations in this area of our department is to continue to develop strategies to decrease the general fund transfer amount in to the budget. We need to financially plan for a future HVAC system for ring two and then continuing just to adapt to the needs of our community, making sure our programming's, you know, inclusive and accessible. Any questions?
Questions from council? Mary?
First of all, thank you for all the work that your department does. That was amazing. The one thing I just want to say, I really support doing the inventory and the assessment of all of the facilities so that we can come up with a long-term plan. I think that's really a good idea.
Yeah. Other, Ben and then Sean.
I was going to echo that last comment and then two things that seem kind of prime opportunities for more council to play more of a role in communications and public engagement stuff. One is as we're prioritizing within the climate action plan, and I know we had emailed a bit about it, some of the initial ideas that you and Rachel had shared, I think are great. So on that front, I guess just keep us, keep us posted, how we can help with sort of both messaging outward and also gathering input as that process continues. The, precisely what Mary just mentioned, I'm also really excited about the facilities assessment. Is that something, I mean, is that like a fairly internal study or is that a time for community input and what people want to see? Is there a role for us to play or is it mostly more research that we then decide what to do with after?
That's a good question. It was part of our strategic plan that Public Works and Recreation would collaborate, probably because it's such a big project, work with a consultant to inventory, you know, everything from the roof to that park building to the sewer on that street and what are the conditions? What year does it need to be replaced? I think we'll get a good sense. And then I think once we see where everything's at, we can get input, like what makes sense to, to keep. If something's in really bad shape, but it's underutilized, you know, I think we, there are parks that have buildings and we only use one week out of the year. Does it make sense to fix the roof for, you know, 200,000 or does it make sense to build a park, you know, picnic shelter that would be used much, you know, nine months out of the year by a lot more people? So just stuff like that. I think people, we want in, you know, we do community engagement around it before anything's done and, and just make the best decisions for the community with them.
Are there comments? Go ahead, Sean.
So just to follow up to that, we anticipate after doing that study, we have some unknown amount that we will need to come up with to raise in the future, right? Some large, large park amount of capital upgrades?
Yeah, I think it will help us understand the condition and what really needs to be done. We did that preliminary inventory. I know Mary looked at it through the Community Services Commission and we just, in a snapshot, said is it low, medium, high priority? Like, should we be looking at this next year or five years from now, 10 years from now? Such as roof or, you know, does that sewer need to be done five years from now? I think it will help us, you know, budget for it, definitely, short-term and long-term.
Okay. Then I was also curious about user fees and how you sort of decide what to charge for things. I was just like curious of the pool and I see we're like a couple bucks cheaper than Edina. I assume the hockey arena also has user fees like that. Just how are those prices set? Because obviously we want it to be accessible, but I guess I'm wondering why we're charging less or is our, is our pool not of as many features or what?
Yeah, with, with the arena, Chris is part of like Minnesota Hockey
I was just like curious of the pool and I see we're like a couple bucks cheaper than Edina. Um, I assume the hockey arena also has user fees like that. Just how are those prices set? Cause obviously we want it to be accessible, but I guess I'm wondering why we're charging less. Or is our, is our pool not of as many features or, or what?
Yeah, so if, with the arena, um, Chris is part of, uh, like Minnesota Hockey Association where they, they do have, I've, I've seen it with him, a sheet where you can look at all the prices and they try to stay relatively competitive with one another. So nobody's super, super cheap or super expensive. Uh, we're right in the middle, our arena. And that's something that we've talked about, could we increase it perhaps? Cause our location is so great, next to, you know, a lot of freeways and the airport. Um, the pool, I think it's a fine balance between making sure we're not priced too high where people are, can't afford it. Um, and also, you know, we don't have the splash pad and some of the, the newer amenities. Um, we were trying to always add the upgrades to, to keep it interesting for people that go home all the time, like the climbing well. But your $10 seems to be kind of right in the middle.
Okay.
Of fees.
I guess I just wasn't wondering particularly with the investment in the free splash pad, if it would possibly time to look at increasing the cost of the pool, the main pool itself, since we are offering now a free complimentary amenity?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we've had that conversation, but it would be something to explore.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Other comments? Simon?
Yeah.
Um, I, I wanted to say, you, you mentioned about the retention of the lifeguard staff that, so it's a high user. Um, I just want to say that the staff has just done an incredible job this summer. Keeping everybody safe, but really being pleasant and great spirit with everybody there. Um, I, I did wonder if there wasn't, do we, do we have any scholarships available for, for families that have kids?
Yeah. Yeah, see, we have the, the pass part program. So any Richfield resident, um, you know, can apply through the pass part program. And I believe it's like $75 a year programming can be paid for. It can be used for pool pass or any program that they'd like.
Thank you. And I'll just do, um, share a couple of things I was thinking about. This all sounds really amazing. And I love like the items that you're focusing on, looking to the future. Um, one thing, I think about this particularly for recreation and our liquor stores. But where we're just seeing more people using these resources, I think in the future we'll continue to see more. I know we're pulling in people from all different communities. People love our pool. Um, and just thinking about that training, that customer service training, training, and specifically as it relates to, um, just being a welcoming place for all different cultures, especially in a pool environment that looks very specific for, for different communities. I know we had, I had passed on a couple, um, concerns that community had, but just thinking about that for those customer-facing roles. Um, given that people are coming to Richfield, Richfield from all over. And then it would be neat as you're thinking about the programming, given right now we have 40% of, well, 72% of our kids are students of color, 40% of those are Latino kids. And having so many different languages in our, in our community. Is there, um, in the future partnerships to start doing some multilingual 101? And, and really doing that in partnership, as you know, um, when it's done in partnership with those community groups, the attendance is a lot higher. Um, but just thinking, you know, maybe every quarter, is there something that we can say we're featuring a Spanish language? Or Somali, um, type of programming too? So, that's it?
Yeah, thank you. And we started, um, meeting with outdoor, Minnesota Outdoor Latino and exploring how can we partner together? Particularly I would like and, and getting more folks outside and just comfortable accessing nature, I would like, so.
Thank you so much, Amy. And then we pass it to Melissa.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Um, this will seem like it passes in 30 seconds compared to Amy's. So, in community development, uh, to remind everyone, we have 21 positions in our department. Uh, but several of those are primarily funded by the HRA and to a lesser extent, the EDA. Um, the city portion of our budget, uh, is made up of three divisions. We've got the CD administration budget inspections and planning and zoning. Um, and I like to think of these as, or the city portion of our budget is actually kind of our regulatory and enforcement, uh, portion of our department. These are really, um, state-guided and policy enforcement positions. Um, as opposed to the work that our HRA and EDA are doing. Uh, the story of CD this year has really been, uh, staff turnover, staff changes. Um, we've had our very own great reshuffle in our department. Uh, these are three of our newest hires, but even since this presentation was made, we've hired another person. Um, our housing specialist, he didn't even make the presentation. So we've had, um, three retirements, five departures, three promotions. We have six new staff and two positions yet to be filled. So, um, yeah, that kind of tells the story of what's going on for us. Overall, the 2022 revised budget is decreasing significantly for us, almost eight and a half percent. And that's because of those, that staff turnover. We had some very senior staff leave, um, and have some more junior staff coming in. There's a small, uh, increase from 2022 revised to 2023. Um, but that's just as our staff, our new staff start moving through those step increases. Um, and, but you can see that even in 2023, we'll remain, um, under our 2021 actual and 2022 budget. Uh, to make sure, just to make sure that everybody understands what, um, all three of these divisions are. Um, CD admin is really, um, some non-discretionary funds. There's actually no labor that stays in that budget. All of the labor, um, in CD is, um, shuffled out to the individual programs. So some of the labor goes to planning and zoning, some to inspections. And then a lot of it goes over to the HRA and EDA. And we'll talk about that in a few minutes. We expect inspections revenues to remain high, given the amount of activity that's going on. And the fact that we're still a really strong housing market. And, um, you know, hopefully that will propel a number of the, a number of these exciting projects that we have in the pipeline to actually come through in 2023. Like I said, a lot of this budget is non-discretionary salaries, benefits and non-discretionary costs, over 90%. Uh, the things that are discretionary in this budget are things like training, professional memberships. Um, all the things that you need to do to keep your staff healthy and happy. And, um, bring them up to the level that you want them to be so that they can be the best, um, employees in Richfield. Uh, historic development highs, uh, have really laid bare the inadequacies in some of our processes and our, um, technology. We have just a desperate need to dramatically improve that, um, in order to improve customer service. And also to, um, take some of the pressure off of our inspectors and planners. So, um, and like I mentioned before, a lot of the visible stuff that we do is actually under the umbrella of the HRA and EDA. So there's a link to that presentation, um, and that was on Monday, if you'd like to take a look at that too. So some highlights for inspections, um, not necessarily a highlight, but certainly a big deal are, um, the retirement of Rick Rainier at the end of 2021, which I know had a number of us very nervous. Those are some big shoes to fill. Um, but our new chief building official Chad Lunder is doing great. He's a great fit for us. Um, I think he's, he's energizing that staff and, um, things are going really, really well. The same can be said for, um, our new senior clerk and our new plumbing inspector. But that's, you know, a lot of new staff in, in a division. And so there's a lot of time being spent on just onboarding people and making sure that people know, you know, how to do things, where to find things. Um, and again, with, with this lack of technology, it's more and more obvious that our filing systems do not work. Um, a plan review room that is stuffed so full, it looks like we're hoarders, is, is not efficient. Um, we need to make some changes there. So we're working really hard to get ready for the transition to an electronic plan review and comprehensive permitting system. You know, the level of coordination that is needed between all of our departments to get these big projects through is intense. And we have to do a better job, um, with that. So right now, um, inspections is working hard to make sure that we're just inventorying what we need. Because not only do we need to start in this new program, we need to move all of our stuff that we have into that program. Um, and we've tried to do this a few times over the last couple of years. We've tried to get this started. But, um, we've just been too busy and we haven't had the funding. And so the opportunity that these ARPA funds, um, is giving us is, is great. Uh, we are on track to do about 15,000 inspections this year. That's, um, building and housing inspections. Our housing team has also been challenged. Um, we were forced to delay a lot of inspections during COVID, particularly our larger apartment buildings. So we're getting back out to do those now and the correction order, the correction lists are very long. And it's very challenging to get, um, people to bring the buildings into compliance. Some of that is staffing for them too. Finding buildings and grounds and property managers is very difficult. But some of it is problem properties that have never been good at compliance. So we are proposing for 2023 restructuring of our reinspection fees. To, uh, right now, they're so low. They're, they're really, they're not really a deterrent to, you know, to letting things linger. Um, so frankly, we're gonna, we're gonna make it count. You're gonna pay for all of that time for our inspectors to come back out. Uh, highlights for planning and zoning, again, staff turnover, but also a promotion. Um, you know, our planner Ryan moved on to Hopkins and I was promoted. So we had a, a real shortage in our planning department this year. Um, assistant planner Nellie Jerome, she really stepped up. Um, and our revised budget does include, um, a promotion for her. Um, but we were also forced to hire some outside help. We just couldn't, um, get through our workload without that. Um, and if there are significant projects coming in, um, the rest of this year, uh, we would anticipate possibly needing to keep that help on. We kind of have an open contract with that consultant if we need it. When I was putting this presentation together, it was before I had a conversation with the hub yesterday. Um, so we'll see if that hub EAW needs to come in this year. That's the environmental assessment worksheet. Um, the, the hub's major tenant has backed out, which has put the entire, um, kind of commercial side, I'll say, of the project, the non-rainbow side of the project, uh, in a major state of flux. So we'll have to see what happens there. But there are a number of other large projects. And as Sam Crosby, our new planner, um, gets up to speed, we might continue to need some help. We have, however, despite all of that, um, gotten some, some non, um, application-type work through. We did some ordinance amendments to firearms-related uses, electric vehicles, working on fences. And very much hoping that we can get, um, the missing middle-type zoning ordinances across the finish line this year. For 2023 initiatives and goals, um, inspections really is to implement that new permitting and plan review software. That's their big goal. I mean, that's just going to help everyone out. It's going to help all of the divisions out, not just inspections. Um, and then continued onboarding and training, uh, with all of that new staff. We want, um, you know, we want everyone fully up to speed. We want everyone trained on this new permit system. The idea is we need to work smarter, not harder, um, because our, our staff is tired. Um, and then the, kind of the same with planning, reviewing and processing land use applications, which we're required to do enforcing codes. Um, reviewing our land use regulations for disparate impacts, you know, that's been something that's been kind of ongoing. We'd like to continue it, but we have, we have very limited time, um, when so many projects are coming in. And again, continued onboarding and training of that staff. Future considerations, um, you know, the, the economy right now is so hard to predict. Um, we are, feel optimistic that things are going to keep moving forward in Richfield, that we've got a lot of strong projects, that there's just a demand for housing that is, feels insatiable at this point. And so these projects are going to continue to move, but, um, we don't have a crystal ball, so. Uh, and then another big one is HRA and EDA, uh, financial support of our staff after 2025. When a lot of the, or three of those really large TIF districts will, uh, be decertified and roll off. And I'm gonna, I'll tell you this, I assume most of you know this, but a lot of the HRA and EDAs or HRA's work is, uh, funded through either the Housing and Redevelopment Fund, the pooled TIF. And then the staff that administers the programs that use that pooled TIF, we can use TIF admin to pay for. So as the districts, those really large districts decertify, we're not only going to need new program funding, we're also going to need staff funding. Um, so if you, if you watch, um, the HRA budget presentation, you know, we, the levy increase this year is, is small. We know the pressure on the city budget. Um, but in these coming years, we, we need to have a strategy, um, to make sure that we'll be able to continue to offer a lot of these programs that are very popular and they're, um, the things that, some of the things that I think we're most proud of. Uh, a lot of staff, a lot of new roles. And I'll just, just to reiterate for you guys one more time, we have five new staff in 2022, two vacant positions. Um, in addition to that, Julie and I are new roles. And so with that, you've got half of the department learning new jobs. Um, so onboarding, training, succession planning, leadership. Um, all of those things are a big focus for us in 2023. And that's it.
Thank you so much, Melissa. Ben?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. No, obviously very much in flux based on the news you just shared about the hub. But just wondering to the second point, um, would be, I think best, probably. Uh, if they did not need TIF, that seems unlikely. Um, if that whole area, whole hub area were to be redeveloped, were to be a full TIF district, do we have a sense of, is that half of what we're losing in 2025? Is it close to as much or is it like a drop in the bucket?
That's a good question and one that I don't think we have a good answer for. Because it's, well, what I can tell you is that the, the market value of the hub now is a lot higher than you would expect. And so, you know, TIF is the, the difference. And so the fact that they're starting out a lot higher, um, makes that difference smaller. Uh, the other thing is that even if the hub moves forward, uh, it is not going to replace a Best Buy. But if the hub were to redevelop, it takes a few years for it to really truly generate the full amount of increment. And so there's, regardless of what happens, there's going to be some lean years here where we need a real strategy.
Other questions? Sean?
Um, I was just curious, in the last budget, uh, there was a specific note about money set aside for a planning study of 66th Street, Orange Land Station. I'm certainly not surprised we didn't get to it because a lot's been going on. But is that still budgeted for? Is that a possibility in the coming year or is that just off the table at the moment?
At this point, that's off the table. I mean, it didn't come up as part of the strategic plan. And I, I, I can't see how we would have time to take that on in addition to the other projects that are going on.
Okay, I, I was not aware that we would need to re-advocate for things that were previously budgeted for in the strategic planning process. Um, I'm not sure I would have advocated for it over that, but it was not clear to me that we were assuming that a previous item would have been discarded in that.
Yeah, it, I think that was always a, we hope to get to that.
Okay.
Um, but we don't have the capacity to get to that.
Okay. Um, and then,
Which projects?
This was the possibility of looking at land use issues around 66th Street and 35W for the Orange Land Station. And I think the assumption was hiring an outside firm to do a study, right?
That, that's true, hiring an outside firm, but that still is a lot of staff time.
Oh, yeah. I, I didn't mean to say that you could just do that. I just meant like that was what was envisioned of what a product might be.
Yes, we would, we were looking at hiring a consultant to help us with that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, otherwise I'm, I'm happy with what I see. Um, I like particularly the ongoing focus on disparate impacts and kind of the active review of our code. And it's good to see things being flagged, um, through the, through the staff process.
Mary?
Um, first of all, in the actual budget that we got presented, I liked that they had the strategic development section because there's so much going on and you forget how much has happened in the last couple of years. So that was a really good reminder of everything that your department and the city as a whole has been doing. Um, I also am really looking forward to seeing the TIF management plan that's going to be coming up because I think that'll help us. And it sounds like the ARPA funds are going to be put to good use with all the upgrades. It, do you need more than that or is that could be enough to cover it?
That's a good question. I, I think that we've got enough to cover the implementation of the system. I, I think that we've got enough to cover the implementation of the system. And actually, we've put some money in there to help the other departments pay for it for a year, because it's gonna be increased, it's gonna be increased costs for everyone. So we're buying some people time. I, I do think that the 250 should be enough.
And I just wanna, oh. I just wanna say thank you so much, Melissa, for everything that you've done to step into leadership as the CD Director and to Julie, to Nellie, to everybody that's been, you know, shown such great leadership. And I'm really happy that we were able to promote folks that have been doing great work. And I'm hiring a new staff and building a new office. And it's only four hires and I can't, and learning a new job. And I can't imagine for you, I, I personally feel that. And, and thank you for everything that you've done in this transition. And I really hope that we're, we're able to provide them what they need to stay and to build that strong culture and support that they need to stay. So thank you for, for that. Thank you.
Okay, admin services.
Thank you, I'm gonna go ahead and admin services. There's eight divisions in administrative services. Administration, City Clerk, Communications, Deputy Register, which includes motor vehicles and passports, Human Resources, Information Technology, and now the inclusion of the liquor store operations and then Building Services. So that totals to be about 23 full-time employees, a number of part-time and intermittents. The Minister Service Department includes the effects of the General Fund, which has administration, human resources, deputy register, city clerk. And then there's Internal Services Fund. That's the self-insurance and general insurance and property liability, which includes HRA also in there. And then Building Services, that's more internal. Same thing with information technology, IT. And then the Special Revenues Funds include the cable communications, elections, and liquor store operations enterprise. This is what affects the General Fund is administration, human resource, deputy register, city clerk. As you can see in there, administration includes myself, parts of communications. And then if you can see, some of the highlights for human resources, as you can see, it increased by 93%. A lot of that has to do with just staff leave. And, and it was one of the, the HR manager was on, on leave for a couple of months, then found, then accepted a position from a different city, which had a gap. We had a contractor to fill in the two-month gap when she was on leave. And then now we've kept on the consultant or the contractor a little longer to cover. And then we just hired a new HR manager. And then now part of moving forward into our current financial software system is, is very old. Logis will be moving to a new financial software. So we've kept that consultant on to do some cleanup for our financial software. So when we're ready, we can integrate that into the, the new system. And then, of course, if you see the city clerk, the budget is low because it is supplemented by internal funds that are transferred, but also funded by the elections funds also. And the election fund includes, which is unique, which we found out, which I found out when I started, was that the election fund revenues is coming from the tower rentals in City Hall. Budget notes in there, like I mentioned before, human resources for the 2022 revised, the budget increased because of, of the, of the cost of the coverage, but also financial software. And then increase in health insurance of 10.73% for 2023, which will be split between city and employees. There was a decrease in property liability insurance premiums of about 5.5%. And then recently, we've seen a, a big increase in work comp claims for 2022. And we expect them to, to continue in 2023. That's something that the city and the council will have to determine if we continue to be self-insured or not. Budget note for information technology, IT, there was changes made in the chargebacks for 2022, the revised budget, and changes for 2023 to reflect actuals in all departments and their funding sources. And then the deputy register, the DMV and passports, the expenditures are expected to exceed revenues by $62,000 for 2023 proposed budget. What that means is that residents, Richfield residents are supplementing the department because of the resources or the department scope is not just Richfield residents, but it's everyone that is surrounding Richfield or has access to the DMV. And as you can see, we've been getting more and more people from different communities come because the Bloomington's office did close. So we're getting some of the people that were going to Bloomington now are coming to Richfield, which is great in terms of revenues, but I'll talk more later about why it's been bad recently. So some of the highlights for the human resources, successfully negotiating five labor agreements, which will be starting again on a number of them this year with the new HR manager. And then delivering diversity, equity, and inclusion training for all employees, continue to help employees navigate COVID-19 using federal and state guidelines, which continues, I know people are looking at, or people, it's kind of in the back of people's minds, but it, it continues to affect City Hall and a number of incidents in terms of just staff in general and how we provide internal services. Some of the highlights for 2022 for a city clerk, trying to maintain the record for all the various commissions, meeting orders, resolutions, legal notices, and then assuring that election and vote restoration activities were conducted in a safe and secure manner. Carrie did an excellent job this year, or right, or this past week with the primaries. 2022 highlights for the deputy register, rebuilding a team due to multiple staff changes. The position of the motor vehicle license supervisor was filled along with three part-time, adding greeter, greeter roles and welcome customers and make sure that they have the necessary paperwork to successfully complete their transaction. Then implementing a new credit card systems with no cost to the city. So the first bullet point being a highlight, the last month or two is, we've lost, or we will lose four people in total. So two greeters, which is difficult to, to get because it's, it, it's not just a greeter for that department, but it's a greeter for the services for throughout City Hall. So, yep, so it's two greeters and two people in motor vehicles. So we're currently trying to recruit from them, but it's been very difficult, kind of like what Melissa stated. Some of the highlights for IT, I, I won't go through all of them. I'll just mention a few of them. But the, I'd say the, the most important to, to the public is making sure that we provide access to the council, the meetings, either in person here or virtually. So that's been really helpful for community members. And then updating some of our resources within our websites, providing access to agendas and forms and meeting minutes. The other thing, the other highlight is that we've started the process of upgrading the 365, Microsoft 365. We've, we didn't know how outdated we were until we got into it. I knew how outdated we were when, when I started, when I started to work on some of the documents. I'm like, why can't I do any of this? And that's why. So, so 365, we've been, we're, so outdated that we actually have to update to. So right now, we're in 2010 and we have to update to 2016 first and then update to 365. So we're in that process of doing that. And then another, so, and then communications highlight, assisting staff with promotion and marketing for more than 20 citywide events, activities, roll out the dialogue one, and then working with stakeholders to update the mission and vision statements for organizations. Some of the initiatives and goals for 2023, I'll go through. Human resources is continue to review and update our personnel policy and then look at ongoing changes in law and updates. We, I'd say probably in the last about month, month and a half, that's, that's, that's the area that we really need to focus on. There's a lot of update, outdated information. And we even just found out there's outdated, outdated information even in some of our union contracts too. So our focus at first to continue to increase diversity in the workforce and implement DEI policies and procedures, ensure an inclusive and supportive workforce. Then assist with succession planning for all city departments. And of course, that's happening as cities across the board, across Minnesota is trying to do that, maybe in the nation. But it's been difficult trying to hire good quality employees to replace the people. Information technology, continue to evaluate the needs and costs to connect our current fiber networks throughout our facilities and then includes, or increase the use of laser fish, or laser fish technology to create some applications. We've, we're kind of on the finish line on some of those items in terms of workflows, automations, electronic process. I think it'll free a lot of time and, and make a lot of the departments more efficient. Similar to what Melissa mentioned in terms of like the, the planning software. You know, right now, you know, right now, for example, our personal action form that we get, so that's the form that every, every time someone gets hired or changes positions, you have to fill out. And right now, we have an HR staff that will take the form or email the form and get signatures from four or five different people. And then she gets back, she tracks it on a, a very complex Excel spreadsheet. Now, we have, we have a number of new people on our IT that, that has the ability to work on workflows. And that's what we're doing right now, is trying to automate that. So then, some of the, kind of what we do with our time card is that it's electronic signature. It gets automatically passed on to the next person. And hopefully, it should give HR more time to, to focus on other areas instead of just the day-to-day, you know, trying to check down Mike to get his signature, but he's on vacation for a week, so. Deputy register, again, purchase of the new point-of-sale system to help with record-keeping organization, or organization of the motor vehicle passport office. And then focusing a lot on just the, the customer service and, and how that's, how that's given to the residents. And then work on, work on the, the transportation bill, trying to, right now, the, the fee hasn't increased for a number of years in trying to get that, because of course, cost, cost increases, but we continue to only charge what they, what we're allowed to charge. The city clerk, the initiative for 2023, one of the biggest ones is the record management systems here for the city that goes through a laser fish. We'll be working on, Carrie and I will be working on, you know, working with various departments on how we can streamline that process and making sure that we have records or make sure that we maintain the records that we have, but also make sure that we get rid of records that we don't need. And then Building Services is focusing on, similar to what kind of Amy mentioned, is looking at some of the facilities and the buildings and what needs to be maintained and, and how we fund that. The City Hall is getting older. There are a number of things that are, that are deteriorating that needs to be replaced. Communications, create pop-up engagement tools and opportunities for staff to better interact with residents, enhance some of the internal communications and opportunities for staff to, for development and fellowship and fun. So that's, that's word that we like to hear is fun, right? Get your balance revenue limitations and costs, upgrade public meeting broadcast equipment. And then also try to work on internal communications, not only for staff, but also with the council and residents and, and how, how certain messages can be conveyed. Now, future considerations and needs, this is more internally. But just for council to know, and I mentioned before, is Microsoft 365 is gonna be subscription-based. So hopefully, as, when the council does approve the ARPA funding, the departments will have that funded until 2020, or through 2023. So the departments will have to budget for 2024, so you'll see an increase in that. And then also reviewing staffing needs in all divisions, especially human resources, communications. There's a number of initiatives in both of those areas that, that need to be done. But capacity, we'll see how capacity is. But it'd be reevaluated once we start taking a look at some of the efficiencies that come out of some of the technology upgrades and process.
Great. Any questions? Ben?
I was just gonna ask, I, I know clearly we've been sort of in a hole on the software and hardware front, IT stuff. Do we, I know Microsoft 365, this new permitting software are like some of the major things that impact many departments, if not all. Are we, and then on the hardware side, I think mainly the meeting rooms is planned. Once we complete those, are we, are we like up to date? Or are we like, we can see out of the hole, but we're still in it?
I'd say, from my perspective, I'd say we, we can see the light. Yeah, we're, we're trying to crawl out of it. But again, you know, once, once people get used to it, we, you know, there's a number of different processes that still need to be taken and, and it's a long process. I mean, even when I talk about the, the path to making that electronic and, and how that's gonna look, we just had a, it was supposed to be a 45 minute, or minute meeting and ended up being like almost a two-hour meeting because there's just so many components and so many variables in it that, that, you know, it's, it's not as simple as just, yeah, let's just put out the electronic form, let's just create it and all of a sudden, you know, there's different variables that you have to take a look at. But I think we're, we're getting there. And, you know, I don't know what the timeline of, of, you know, what that success means, but we're, we're getting there. And I think, you know, even like the last, I've been here, what, eight months? I mean, I can, I could see, you know, a lot of different changes in various different departments and, and even the perspective too, that, you know, it's just, you know, we're going, we're moving. You know, things are changing. We're, we're trying to, to, to help you, you know, do your work better and more efficient. And then, you know, you're gonna have more time. And, and, but, you know, without knowing what that, what that's gonna be yet, I, I can't say that's gonna save us two hours of time or 10 hours of time. But, you know, I, I think it'll allow us to do more of the council's initiatives now, you know, as we implement these systems.
Okay, and I, my, I guess my follow-up I'm getting to is, we, seems like in the last couple of years, we've had a recognition of like, oh, our capital budget planning has done pretty well on roads and, like pipes. But we, like recreation, we do have these major needs. Are we, since I'm not expecting ARPA to kind of reappear every five years or so, are there major IT capital needs we're gonna have? And is that part of the long-term financial planning that's part of strategic planning? Or are we, I guess I'm just thinking of like we, on recreation infrastructure, on climate initiatives, like we've, we have a few of these places where we've seen like, okay, we're gonna have to identify a funding source. Are we in that space too on IT?
I was just gonna mention that we have the independent assessment. It's gonna look at security and also gaps in our systems. And we can also ask them to look at, you know, upcoming hardware and making sure that we're planning for that as well.
Jane, Jane, our IT manager, has been doing a really good job, I think, in terms of just replacing equipment. So I mean, some of those larger costs is, is included in the budget. But there are other items, you know, like 365. I mean, you know, software like that wasn't included in there and because it's, you know, there's a huge cost in that. But there's other things that we have to take into consideration. And like Katie mentioned, that, you know, that assessment from Lauffer will help us in that process. But a lot of it is, is just the, the security risk that we have. I mean, right now, we pay close to $100,000 in, in the cyber insurance. I mean, that's huge. And, you know, that's just gonna continue to get higher and higher in terms of just the vulnerabilities of any operations, you know, especially municipalities. And with just some of the data that we keep, we want to make sure that that's secure. And so that's, that's gonna affect, you know, how we budget for IT in the future.
Mary?
Mary?
So first of all, thank you for all the, I know you've made a lot of progress and in you guys have really worked on um building the internal infrastructure and I appreciate that and it's been across several departments. I have some long-term questions, so you mentioned like the elections fund is paid for by the antennas on the cell phone towers. And I assume that revenue probably will keep continuing into the future. But the communications seventy-five percent was being funded by cable franchise. Is that something that's gonna slowly phase out as technology changes and we go to more streaming and are we gonna need to come up with a new funding source? And then I have one more question after that.
The, from what I've seen, the the finance department did anticipate for that uh, cause part of the the shift of the communications department or the actual uh salaries and benefits of communication did, it was allocated last year of twenty-five percent, so they've been trying to bring that into the general fund. But the, but the revenues are, like you said, Mary, they are decreasing rapidly. So the council will have to take a look at what the funding sources will be in the future.
And then the other question is, you talked about lobbying the Department of Transportation to try and get more like actual like get reimbursed for the work we're doing so we're not subsidizing. If that doesn't happen, is that down the road, something we have to look at whether or not we continue that service?
That will be one of the things that the council will have to consider because they, it is supplemented by the general fund. And that's gonna be a decision the council will have to make in terms of what's important to uh the residents of Richfield.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'm wondering, um, if I have questions, I might start writing them down to email to, they're they're not things that I think we need to discuss in a work session, but might, I might have just follow-ups later too, because I know we still have to get through. Um, so liquor operations, please.
Hello, Mayor, council members, city staff. Um, my name is Chris Fierst, I'm the liquor operations interim uh manager for the city since Bill's absence. What do I do, like write? Keep in mind, I haven't done a speech in about fifteen years.
So. Bill would always bring us samples just to.
I was going to, but I figured that'd be poor taste. Um, so the liquor operations department overview, we have five full-time employees, I mean, currently four with the absence of Bill Fillmore. One store manager at each store, uh, two permanent part-time leads at each store and about thirty-seven intermittent staff. Um, we could use about fifteen more just to to help ease the constraints of the increased sales volume, but we're not alone, as we all know. Just, this is an older photo, but that's me on the left there, I've been with the city since two thousand eight. Right to the right is Ryan Shogren, he's been with the city since two thousand six, um, he's the Penn Avenue manager. Obviously, you all know Bill Fillmore and then Haley Sir, she's been with the city since two thousand six and she's the Wine and Spirits manager. And then Brad Langer, he's been with the city since nineteen ninety-three, so we have a lot of longevity and he's uh, he's our Cedar Avenue store manager. So I just wanted to acknowledge that that amount of time that we have here. So I was kind of thrown into the budget and in preparing the budget, I um, I I modified modified it down, um, I've, I believe there was a about a seven percent increase uh in sales volume, which I I felt, you know, three point nine to four percent was a little more reasonable, especially with our trending uh weekly sales um going up and down anywhere from two to uh five percent weekly. And then um, our revenues down there on the bottom at shops, at Wine and Spirits, there was a an air in line item. Five twenty-five, which is cigarettes, um, that overstated it by a hundred and ninety-five thousand. So that's that seven percent decrease there in sales volume, um, I just wanted to highlight that. Some of the twenty twenty-two highlights, we resumed in-store sampling back in March. Um, we also for Saint Patrick's Day and March of the month, we did a barrel select with Keeper's Heart, the O'Shaughnessy Distillery in Minneapolis. Um, it's finished in stout barrels, it's a really nice selection and um, that was back in March. And then we did the toast of Richfield back in May, AKA the Richfield Foundation. And this is the, this was a pleasant surprise, normally we do this in fall, but um, it was in spring and I think a lot of people were roaring to get out of the gates and uh socialize after, you know, two years in lockdown. Um, we had sales volume orders of about eight thousand five hundred and the top item was Don Alberto Extra Nejo tequila at a hundred and thirty dollars a bottle, so it, um, people were were spending money. Um, and it, it's just nice to, I think, we we talked with, um, oh gosh, what's her name? From the Richfield Foundation about maybe next year working to tie in uh the liquor operations and make it a little more known. Um, what we do, you know, that we're park builders, we're not necessarily just retail uh stores. That's Bill, that's probably from like the late eighties. Bill Fillmore retired back in May, um, after four plus decades of service with the city. And in July, we updated to our new P O S system, right, cloud retailer. Um, it's got a lot of bells and whistles, it's a little overwhelming, but it's the the possibilities that it's gonna have for us are really good. Um, and just this past week, I didn't have time to get it on here, but last Friday, we received a private select Four Roses barrel from, um, well, Four Roses Distilling down in Kentucky, and this was presented to us as a opportunity to buy. And in the back of my head, I'm like, yeah, yeah, what, is this a big deal? Well, apparently it is because we've sold uh thirty-plus units in the last five days, it's ninety-nine dollars a bottle. It's it's on our marquees at the stores and it's not, it's not even priced, it's just a very well, well-known product and um um, it 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 just shows the scale of um volume that we're going through, that we got selected to at least participate in a project like that. So like Richfield is, you know, like the little engine that could. Um, our twenty twenty-two roundup campaign so far, they're, they're a little bit lower than last year, but like the urban wildlife youth, youth registration, we had about a thousand. The dock park equipment is about thirteen hundred and so far the trees for Donaldson Park is about twenty-five hundred or twelve fifty. Um, I think we just as a a liquor staff and team need to really empower and encourage our our staff to ask every time. It's super easy and if you just do it, you're not, it's not a thing, you know, but I know we have a lot of long-time staff, they're a little hesitant. Um, but people will surprise you, especially, you know, you see people digging in their their um, their pockets for change and they're like, ah, just take it all. And it might be twenty cents or it might be three dollars and it's like, okay, well, like people will surprise you and it's obviously going to some good things. Our twenty twenty-three initiative and goals are to enhance the connection between our profits and the city's recreational equipment and facilities. Obviously, the roundup program is a great tool for this. Um, and then establish a social media, social media presence linked to the liquor operations webpage. This was a goal for la- this year, but obviously with Bill retiring and the point of sale upgrade, we never really had a chance to dive into it. Um, and then just to enhance the electronic processes between finance and liquor operations uh to improve efficiencies, um, this new P O S system is, like I said, it's really nice, you can scan in an invoice, so that way it's locked in with the receiving report, it's Kathy in finance has access to all of that, but it's just a matter of bridging that with the uh J D Edwards, which I don't know if that's a possibility. And then future, future considerations and needs, obviously staffing at the store level. Uh, U S labor statistics are forecasting a negative percent growth rate in retail by twenty thirty. And, but so far we've been, we've been able to keep the doors open, there's been a few nights where um, a lot of good staff has stepped up and picked up the shifts to make sure we don't have to close, but uh, it's something to consider and dive into next year. Does anyone have any questions?
Good job on presenting, any questions? Nope, all right, thank you, we will pass it to finance.
Okay, um, finance, finance department runs two divisions that rolls up to the general fund. We are responsible to maintain all of city's financial records and to provide accounting and financial support services to other city departments, H R A and E D A. Um, the assessment unit maintains valuation and classification of all real property for taxation purposes. Finance team has an accountant, a payroll accountant, two account clerical personnel, two utility billing clerks and the finance manager. Both utility billing positions are fully funded by the water and sewer division. The newly hired, newly hired utility clerk also support public works and uh public works utility operations. Looking at the budget for twenty twenty-two revised and twenty-three proposed. Twenty-three budget reflects an increase of fifteen point one percent over twenty twenty-two budget. The increase is due to the annual revision in the contract with Hennepin County for property assessment services. Annual external, um, annual external and and internal systems and technology charges are, excuse me, also going up. Additionally, finance experienced staffing attrition and is currently in the rebuilding phase. Outside professional services will be bridging any staffing gaps necessary to ensure seamless operations. Twenty twenty-two revised budget reflects a thirty-one point nine percent increase from twenty twenty-two adopted budget. Again, it's due to the additional professional service cost during the staffing transition. Budget highlight, as we noted, uh, finance maintain all financial records. Uh, during twenty twenty-two, finance received distinguished budget award for twenty twenty-two budget and also received the G F O A certificate of achievement for financial reporting for the year twenty twenty. Uh, city issued bond last month for ten million dollars to refinance the utilities uh and reconstructions of our infrastructure. And a double A plus bond rating was affirmed. Oh, um, and the uh, the assessment, we we contact with the H- Hennepin County to do the assessment services here and as part of the contracted payment, that there is going to be an annual increase next year, that's gonna cost us an additional twenty thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-three initiatives, um, finance is going to be working on developing long-term financial plans to implement actions as identified in the strategic plans of the city. We will also be reviewing and updating the much-needed tech tools and business processes. A review of the current processes, processes and workflow will also be undertaken to strengthen the internal controls. We are going to support and stabilize the staff, um, hiring, onboarding, supporting, training, uh, that's all um into that. Labor market is very competitive and employers across the board are feeling the sting of attrition.
Thank you, any um questions? Nope, all right, thank you so much and pass it to Kristen, thank you.
Public Works has a core of just over fifty employees. Um, and we bring on our seasonal staff like recreation does, um, when we can get them. And then we have our um, our divisions, we have four general fund divisions, uh, three enterprise or utility divisions and then our central garage. Our core services are listed here, I think we just pretty much, we work hard to sustain and improve the quality of life. Richfield and we also um deliver capital projects and um provide the fleet services for all the um divisions that have fleet. And then of the twenty-five million that we budget for our, a department, four point nine is included in the general fund budget. So here's the general fund, um, both the public works admin and engineering are primarily personnel services, a big percentage of those budgets come out of the general, well, they come, they're funded outside of the general fund using the enterprise funds. M S A and project funds. And the engineering um budget shows up as five forty-eight in the general fund, but the actual budget for engineering division is eight seventy-one and the rest of that's coming out of um M S A and the utility funds and project funds as well, so um. The also, okay, I was gonna point out the engineering has the five point one eight percent increase, but if you notice the revenue increase, that's the M S A that's covering it, so it really works out to be a two point eight percent increase for engineering and a three point eight percent increase overall for the divisions, but these are the general fund numbers. If you subtract out the revenue, it works out differently, but um, that's how it it's tracked. Uh, there are a lot of increases in the cost of just doing business, um, so uh, water, utility in particular has about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. Four hundred or five hundred and fifty of that is just the roof replacement, we didn't do it this year, we didn't get to it and so it, now the price has increased double. Um, so that's, that's a lot of it, the other stuff is chemical fuel charges, Kamu had mentioned earlier. We're getting surcharged on our deliveries now um because of the fuel, so um that, that's about forty-five thousand dollars just in our chemical deliveries to the water plant, seventeen percent are, um, that's a different number, sorry. And let's see, trying to go quickly, no. Yeah, overall utilities business as usual, aside from all the increased costs. And then I was gonna mention that there's eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's transferred out of the three utilities to fund personnel and other divisions, um, and that's the support that utilities needs to get things done. And it's engineering and admin for public works too. Then our central garage, really primary, uh, two primary revenue sources are our internal operating expenses where we'll charge the other divisions for the work that we're doing on their fleet. And then transfers in, um, which are also included in the levy and other places. And then there is um, everything, there's a seven point five four increase, really that's just the cost of equipment. And then fuel and tires, I mean, tires was one of the line names that jumped up, but um equipment availability is an issue, that's not looking like it's gonna get any better um in the foreseeable future, so you, you, the council has approved a dump truck for it that we don't, we're hoping we can get it in twenty twenty-three, you know, when it was approved, I think. Sometime in the last couple of months, so. And I should mention our, we have our um, Dave Kelly, he's worked for the city for thirty-eight years and he's retiring, he's our lead mechanic, so it'll be a big loss. And he's starting to have second thoughts, I don't know if I told you that. It's like you have to go now, you already took him to lunch, yeah. Um, so I'll just quickly go through the notes because they're pretty self-explanatory, um. We've got the, our increases on our personnel are basically just, you know, their their pay, they're getting, through the step system, we have young employees and then we had some negotiations that kind of jumped for us as far as their pay. And then we moved um from a part-time billing and maintenance clerk to a full-time for utility billing and that's another jump. And then um, I just mentioned the vehicles. For the highlights, um, we're just working on the things that you've all heard about. Um, we'll be getting started um after the meeting in September on that E A B removal assistance program and we, I think we even have that scheduled in a future um work session to talk about some details there. And then this, the the pilot snow emergency changes and the and the parking pilot program, um, we just completed a memo, you'll probably get it this weekend. We're gonna just, we're recommending doing that for another year and then monitoring and assessing that, um, so there's a little more details in the memo. And we just completed a water treatment plant facility plan earlier this year. And that was primarily looking at the structural and architectural like um integrity of the building and then the operational performance of the mechanical electrical systems and then the process itself and the building things, there's a couple of minor things that are now in the capital plan, but nothing major. Um, and the water treatment process itself is solid, um, but there's gonna be, the electrical and mechanical systems are pretty much at the end of their life, so we'll be kind of putting that in, this actually kind of goes to what we're doing with the strategic um plan. This actually kind of goes to what we're doing with the strategic, um, plan as far as assessing our, our assets, so. A little ahead of it there. And then just continuing our sanitary sewer line, lining program, maintaining our vehicles, doing some things with the parks, including upgrading our basketball hoops. And then for next year, um, I'm kind of, my, I'm most excited about this advocacy, um, trying to get some cost share legislation, see where we can go with this. I, I just, if it's needed, I think it's overdue and it makes sense, so we'll see. It's kinda like just Richfield is gonna start this up, so we'll see how, how much traction we can get. And then the seventy-seventh underpass and sixty-fifth street should wrap up at the end of the year successfully. We're gonna do some more solar lighting and we're gonna do a water system modeling, um, project to enhance our risk and resilience plans, so. I think that's it for me. Oh, no. Uh, then future, this is nothing new, I don't think, just looking for funding solutions. Uh, looking for technology solutions that can help us be more efficient and effective in our department. And I think that's probably a citywide thing as well. And then we gotta look at our current and future G I S needs. And that's cities. I think that's also citywide. And then we need a future storage yard and fueling facility that we need to identify a spot for because we're getting, everything we've done as far as fueling and salt storage and bone yard type of stuff is not, it's all going away. So we have no place to store anything and, um, in the near term. So I think we have maybe a few years. But I'm.
Thank you. Um, Ben?
Thank you. Uh, to that last point, to, I think I understood that this is not just like we'll need to, like, pay to rent a space, we literally need to find a space.
Correct. We would really like to find a space, and it's gonna be very challenging. So we currently are with Mendat for our fuel and salt, and they're, they don't own that property and the, and the airport wants it. So I think there's a handful of years at best that they're gonna remain there. Um, and then our, the yard that we have by Taft, we need to get off that land. Um, and so we just found that out. And so we gotta start, and that's where we store our sweepings and our lights. I mean, it's a temporary storage site for us. So, um, we just need to find a place in Richfield, hopefully that doesn't mind temporary storage of our stuff, so, anyway. Melissa?
We have a temporary solution. Okay, other questions? Nope. All right, we'll pass it to Mike.
All right, uh. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, so I'll quickly go through the, the fire department. Uh, so I think the big thing, the, the staffing additions, you see the, at the bottom of the, the org chart there. We've got two new firefighters listed and then firefighter Yantes. Uh, firefighter Yantes is not pictured, but the pictures are actually firefighter Bolshin, firefighter Garcia, and firefighter O'Brien. So we'll have two more hires. We just completed the ride-alongs with those four candidates, uh, yesterday. And, uh, working to, uh, figure out who's gonna be next in the department here shortly. So with the staffing changes, uh, we're able to keep our budget at four percent, uh, right out of the general fund, so. I don't think there's any big things there. Uh, twenty-two highlights, uh, we had a record number of calls, just under forty-seven hundred calls for service, still dealing with COVID. Uh, we had three retirements. Two of those were captains who retired, and one of them was a firefighter. So we had two promotions for captain. Uh, both of those promotions were from lieutenants, so we promoted two additional lieutenants. And then in order to complete all this hiring, there's gonna be six firefighters hired this year, which I don't. I know has never happened in my time, uh, but to Melissa's point about just trying to keep people engaged and trained and ready to go certainly has been our biggest challenge, uh, of, of the last year. Uh, the plan review and inspections piece, uh, that's not going away. Uh, but certainly this new, uh, plan review and permitting software, uh, we're excited to see that come online because certainly that will keep, uh, Janelle able to do her job a little bit more efficiently and share comments and things with Chad without having to walk to Chad's office. She can just hit save and send and it's done. So, uh, the, later this year, uh, we have our fire officer promotional test. We actually go to the Civil Service Commission on Tuesday to, uh, offer them, uh, uh, our promotional process. They'll be the ones to certify it, and then we'll go forward with that if they certify it. We just finished training, uh, our fourth, third and fourth fire investigators, so we'll have fire investigators on every shift, and then we have a youth fire prevention specialist that'll be trained at the end of September. Moving into twenty-three, certainly, you know, like I mentioned already, the, the permitting inspection software. Uh, that along with, uh, the movement to our new CAD system, which is Tyler Technologies, and I don't. That we share with dispatch. Dispatch, uh, basically allows us to use that as part of our agreement with them, but uh, it'll bring a lot of technology to the field for the firefighters, which will be a, a great thing. Uh, we'll have a lot more information than what we do today. Obviously, continuing to build and work on our, um, community risk reduction activities. The unity in the community event was a, a great place for us to, to meet community and be engaged with community. Uh, we'd certainly like to see that continue as well. And then the, the recruiting and retain, the recruiting and retention of employees is always gonna be a challenge. Uh, and I think I mentioned last year that we'd like to look at the possibility of doing a, a fire cadet program. Uh, there's a lot of discussion now just because of the, the rate of hiring that's going on within the state. It's not just Richfield that's hiring firefighters, uh, but we may have to do something probably on a regional level with something like that. So, uh, the goal would be to identify those folks that we think are the Richfield residents that would be great in that position and then get them trained, uh, somehow making that work to, to bring the Richfield residents into the fire department. And then as we look to the future, uh, the fire cadet program is on there at the bottom. Obviously, continuing to develop staff. The staff is, uh, continuing to work at a very high level. Uh, but we wanna make sure that we're continuing to engage them in the next level so that as retirements happen, we don't miss a beat and we continue to respond. With that, I will pause for questions.
Any questions from folks? Ben?
Thank you. Mike, can you just, I know you've told us this before. Can you remind me, it was nearly forty-seven hundred calls for service. Was that, is that like nearly doubled from five years ago, or what's the rate of increase that's been going at?
So I, I just ran the numbers, uh, since two thousand and ten, it's a twenty-five percent increase. So just in the last twelve years, we've gone up twenty-five percent. Uh, when I started ten years ago, uh, we were running just over thirty-seven hundred calls a year. Uh, and now, uh, the, the curve is, I, I think what we're experiencing is, um, we did a really good job of educating people on how to use the nine-one-one for emergency care. Uh, but now people's definition of emergency is different. So I think there's a large portion of our population that uses nine-one-one as their primary care. Uh, and I think one of the things that we have been talking about and that we have out on the horizon is how do we manage that and make sure that Richfield residents are getting the right service, the right level of service uh, without necessarily putting in, into an ambulance and sending them to the most expensive portion of healthcare, so.
Other questions? Okay, sounds good. We can pass it to Jay.
Thank you. We actually offered to go towards the end, so. So public safety. So our department roughly makes up about sixty-eight to sixty-nine employees. Obviously, the director of public safety, deputy director. Um, we're divided in three divisions, patrol, administration, uh, and investigations. Uh, patrol obviously has one lieutenant, eight sergeants, and twenty-five officers assigned to the road. Investigations has obviously lieutenant, um, eight officers. S I U is special investigations unit. Um, right now, we currently do not have an officer in the violent offender task force. Um, I've met with, uh, chief deputy Tracy Martin. We've talked about suspending that contract temporarily until our new officers who are on the bottom, uh, Shafali, Courtney, and Aaron, um, get on their own and then we can backfill that position. So that's an important position for us because what it does is it gives us a force multiplier in situations where we need extra bodies. Um, we can call upon the violent offender task force to get assistance from, uh, Hennepin County. Uh, the next slide also has Steve Guavera, who grew up in Richfield, born and raised. Uh, he just didn't make the first slide, so. Again, we're continuing on with our cooperation with Hennepin County, with the full-time social worker, um, with Patricia, our J C P P liaison. Um, we also have a, a full-time police data and media specialist, and I've shared with the directors today, that's a position that not too many departments had, that we were progressive and we created. Uh, unfortunately, I shouldn't have shared it with too many police departments cuz now they recruited our person away, um, from a neighboring department, so I'll, I'll be replacing that position as well. Uh, and then we share with I T, um, and I T tech because of the amount of technology that we have. Uh, that's an eighty-twenty split. I did bring Jennifer Anderson with me tonight, our support services manager, so I'll have her talk about, uh, support services.
Good evening. Uh, support services includes myself, um, full-time position along with two part-time, uh, environmental health staff who job-share. Um, I've also got two part-time business licensing clerks, uh, in job-share. Um, a full-time code compliance officer, uh, Tim Mahoney, and then two, uh, part-time community service officers. We're actually down to one community service officer right now. Hopefully, gonna be hiring another one very soon. Um, and then we employ a seasonal environmental health tech from, um, anywhere between, um, April through August, September, depending on, um, conditions in the community.
So we do have one, uh, intermittent employee who is an E O C, emergency operations employee, Charlie O'Brien, who used to be our code compliance officer, works with me, uh, on emergency management. So our public safety budget, the three budget, support services, police operations, and emergency services. I'll talk about police operations. We saw a slight decrease in the revised twenty twenty-two, and that's because we had two long-term sergeants. Uh, Sergeant Lamley and Edwards. Uh, Sergeant Edwards retired. Sergeant Lamley moved on to a different career. Uh, both over twenty-year employees, um, obviously top pay scale, um, and that changes then when we bring in new employees. Uh, we also had two top senior officers leave as well, so there's the cost savings from the police operation division. In emergency services, it's a slight, it looks like it's a large increase of eight point eight eight percent. Um, but the small increase is due to the fact that, um, we're going to provide a stipend to officers who supervise our explore program. Our explore program is very important to us because it brings in Richfield, uh, kids into the community and introduces them to public safety. And then we recruit them and move them on to support services up through then the police department. So there's a, a small cost, uh, in that budget as well. Uh, our revenue, um, based upon the state aid that we receive, fine and forfeits, as Kamuda talked about, has pretty much stayed stable. So I'll let Jennifer talk about support services.
So support services, we're just over one point one million. Um, staff salaries make up about forty-eight percent, uh, with services and charges, um, at about fifty-one percent. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, it's about a sixty thousand dollar increase that, um, essentially equates to the increases that we're seeing in our contracts with Bloomington for public health and environmental health contract work.
So our increase in our budget for police operations is obviously, Mike talked about it a little bit, Tyler Technologies, and I know that you're aware of that. The new data, uh, technology platform that we're switching to in twenty twenty-three. Uh, there is an increase in Logis fees because we have to prorate our costs to stay on our system for public safety until March twenty-third, until we do the cut over to the new system. So there are some cost increases there along with the fact that we have about twenty-three employees that are stepping through the different steps. Um, we also have the, uh, full-time social worker that we have to pay for, um, as well. So those are some of the, the increases. Um, some of the other budget notes that we have, um, obviously, we talked about four new police officers. That's Muriel, our social worker. Uh, the community relations and events, uh, we're obviously doing some of the, the different events that we've done in the past. Obviously, our flagship events of, um, unity in the community, safety day. Um, also heroes and helpers, um, and, and some of the other events that we do are obviously popular. But we're trying to reach out to the community to see what their needs are, to make sure that we fulfill some of the things that they want us to do. Um, so we're, Patricia's working on that. And then the grant that we obtained to conduct a disparity analysis based upon the data that we have from Logis. Um, it's taking us longer to get that information than what we expected. Um, hopefully, we'll get it in the next couple of months. And I'll let, uh, Jennifer talk about support services.
Just briefly, we saw, um, an increase in local public health funding last year, and, um, it was only forty thousand dollars, but that was the first increase in literally four decades. Um, and so that helps us to cover our budget contract with Bloomington for their services, so. Not a lot, but a really big deal. Um, and then citizen serve implementation, which is what Melissa was talking about. It's that new software that's, um, for business licensing, gonna bring us into the twenty-first century. People will be able to apply for, um, applications online. They'll be able to pay online, dog licenses online, all that stuff, so we're really excited about that. Um, we've also got, um, opioid funding coming. Um, we're not sure quite when that's gonna land, but that's a fifteen-year, uh, funding commitment. Um, just over five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, and, and the focus of that between, and that's gonna be a three-city, um, kind of regional effort. The focus will be on prevention and sustainability. Um, and we've still got COVID funding through twenty twenty-three um, for COVID response, monitoring, recovery, and so forth, so, um, lots of good things happening.
So some of our highlights in twenty twenty-two, we talked about the grant and the disparity analysis. Uh, we took over thirty-seven thousand calls for service. That's a slight increase from prior years of nineteen and twenty and even twenty, or twenty-one. As we were in the pandemic, those calls weren't, uh, uh, as many, and now we're starting to, our calls are starting to go up. Uh, the calls are involving, uh, different, you know, situations involving support services with hoarding and mental health issues um, along with emergency calls for service. Uh, talking with Muriel, uh, since she's been here, uh, from February seventh to August eighth. Uh, she's handled over a hundred and twenty-seven calls, which have been referrals from, uh, either the fire department, the police department, support services, community members that she has worked through, um, as a social worker, so. Um, that's about average of what we're probably going to see, uh, based upon what some of the other communities that have full-time embedded social workers have. So it sort of covers the gamut of what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I'll stop for any questions.
Well, I just wanna know how I can get job share as mayor. That sounds like a cool gig. Anyways, uh, questions? Ben?
Um, yeah, a question and a comment. One, um, do we anticipate? Is a hundred and twenty-seven cases, is the, the limiting factor on that? Like, will that double once we have a full-time second social worker? Is it ramping up as the community understands that that's an option? As, uh, officers learn they can refer things? I guess what is the, what should we expect once we get a second person?
I think that's a great question, uh, council member Wayne. I think we're gonna probably see those cases go up um, for probably all the reasons that you just mentioned. One, the additional social worker. Two, the officers making referrals. And with the additional social worker being available to the rest of the departments, uh, to utilize, I think those referrals will, will definitely increase. Um, we're also taking Muriel out in the community with us, um, to be more proactive on dealing with issues, um, before actually referrals are even made. And we expect to do that with the second, second social worker as well.
Awesome. And then my other question slash maybe a comment, just knowing there's a few phases. One, with the, the disparity analysis that's already in process. Two, I know the new technology will allow some other data. Um, just knowing that that is, you obviously know this, it's something we get a bunch of questions about. Um, as much as possible, I don't know that it always needs to be a work session, but, um, if we can get guidance um, on how to, what are the highlights from it as new data comes in? What, um, I don't know, helpful talking points as we hear questions from the community, um, that, that's super helpful.
No, that's, that's a great question. Um, our plan is, once we get the disparity analysis back, depending upon how many pages it's gonna be, and we know it's gonna be pretty lengthy, is for us, uh, to go through it, um, take a look at. lengthy, is for us to go through it, take a look at it, and then probably present it at a study session for you as the mayor and city council. And then obviously probably have some town hall meetings or something like that to go over the data. From what we're being told is, with the information that we have that we supply with Logis and our use-of-force database, along with, you know, what we're seeing for calls for service and things like that, it's going to be a pretty comprehensive report.
Other questions? All right, looks like we can keep going. Thank you.
So I'll let Jennifer talk about some of the highlights in support services.
Just, the chief had already mentioned that, you know, the CSO program, we're attracting a lot of local kids. They've got relationships with some of our lieutenants and leadership in police department. We have successfully transferred several from CSO positions into police officer positions, and so we're really proud of that. I spoke about the opioid funding. COVID, we're starting to see licensing revenue rebound, which is good. People are partying this summer. Our clerk is really busy, and so hopefully we see that continue through the rest of the year and into next year as well.
So our 2023 initiative and goals obviously enhance police effectiveness with additional technology upgrades and apps, which we talked about with Tyler Technology. And one thing that Tyler Technology is going to give public safety, it's going to give us the ability to have a one-stop shop where all our information is put into one system. Right now, we have it parceled out in different systems, which obviously technology costs money. We'll be able to shrink down our budget as far as what that's going to cost us to be able to be on Tyler and Tyler alone. Continue to evaluate and update our city ordinances in the public safety department. You know, we obviously have a work session coming up on THC. We're talking about the noise ordinance. There's ordinance that, you know, are very old that we have to get on top of and prioritize and to make sure that we update those and change those. Some of the goals, continue to build in our diversity and equity work in the public safety department. One of the officers, I won't tell you which one on the first slide, said that we've become a destination department. I said, well, I didn't know we were a club med, but, you know, that's good to know because that shows that the information that we're getting out to cadets and also to employees or potential employees in our culture, obviously it's getting out there and that's good to know for those people that are coming into work for the Richfield PD. Continue to seek out grant funding for new programs and equipment. That's something that we're always trying to do. We'll probably get another justice assistance grant, which we did receive to do the disparity analysis. We've been told that we've gotten the DWI grant again, which is in our seventh year, which is great. And then also to maintain crime reduction efforts to increase the feeling of safety and security by the community partnerships we have. We have our Safe Cam program that people can opt in on, that we get a lot of good information from crimes that maybe occur in the neighborhood that we can take from people's door or bring cameras that they've provided to us, and we can solve a lot of crime that way. But also just as Mike talked about, people dialing 911 and people telling us what's going on. We started, you know, our catalytic converter program, our CAP program and things like that, so that people are obviously taking advantage of that to cut down on some of the crime that we have. And then future considerations and needs, some recommendations, obviously with ARPA, the additional CSO, additional social worker, budget funds for emergency management. As I start to forecast and look at the budget over the next three years, there are going to be some expensive items, again, technology, that are probably going to come into play for public safety. We're going to have to look probably in '24, '25 to replace our mobile and portable radios for encryption capabilities. We're one of the few departments that don't have encryption capabilities, and Edina has told us that they're probably going to look at doing that at some point after we move through the Tyler Technology integration. And then replacement of our squad cameras due to outdated technology. In 2013 is when we put our cameras in. Obviously, unfortunately, they don't last forever in our squad cars, so there's new technology out there, and we'll probably have to go and look at '25, maybe '26 to replace that. So just forecasting on some possible large-ticket items that we're going to have to purchase. And that's it. If anybody has any questions.
Additional questions? All right. Thank you so much, Jay. And last but not least, Katie, legislative executive.
Thank you. They did make me go last. I did not want to. I'm just kidding, actually. So in our department is four budgets, four divisions, and you know all those faces. Overall, we're projecting a 3.19% increase in our budgets, and the legal budget's pretty flat. It's hard to predict legal costs, but it's been pretty stable for the past few years, so I feel comfortable where it's at. The budget increases are coming from personnel costs primarily and then increased technology. And just more information on what's driving the increased costs. I'm going to fly through these because we are over time. So for the city council budget, your budget does fund or did fund the strategic plan, and it also funds the lobbyist contract, which is $30,000 a year. For city manager, most of the highlights were, they were staff-led projects. We did contract for an organizational development consultant who did some great work with our leadership team, including the managers. And the contract was for training the trainers, so we've now got seven trainers to do the work with the rest of our staff. So we hope to have that continue into the future. And the other agency budget and the legal budget are pretty straightforward. We did propose a 4% increase for 2023 for the regular process. It's grants, but it's really contracts with the community, with nonprofits in the community. Also, ARPA, we've proposed $300,000 to add an additional about $100,000 a year for this program for the next three years. As you know, we, Martin Costello retired after many years, and so we've transitioned to HJ Law. Next year, the council budget funds dashboards to track the strategic plan targets, and we'll continue to work with Ann at Lockridge Grindel on our priorities at the Capitol and already started talking with her about it. Just a few updates on some of the goals that I've laid out here. I just okayed the job description for the equity coordinator position, so we are all excited to get that posted and get that filled. As Kamudha talked about, we've already made some changes and upgrades to the long-term financial planning document, the key financial strategies or KFS, and Kamudha's got lots of ideas for how to continue that work, so. I hope to bring the proposal for the effective governance work plan process to you all for consideration yet this year. And the other agencies' budget and the legal budget, you know, it's basically a one-year program for the other agencies, and then legal is providing excellent legal services. Not a lot of specific upgrades to talk about. And then I'll just summarize with some wisdom from my old stomping grounds, Chicago. I really believe that the success of our, both our budget plan and our strategic plan is to focus on the basics, and that includes having a high-functioning team at the top and stabilizing our workforce, updating our technology, process improvements. We've got a lot planned, and I hope to continue to have them be, you know, each department have a process improvement each year, and then also the long-term financial planning. So just to summarize what you've heard already in all the presentations tonight. And I can take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from folks?
I'm just going to say a couple things. I'm super, I'm just, oh, are you, are you finished, Katie? Okay, so my comments are more just a few things that I just was listening to overnight or over the night. I'm really glad that there is a lot of focus on internal process improvements. I really do hope to Melissa's point of how do we work smarter and not harder, I really hope that we can keep going in that path because it seems like it's a huge pressure on staff, and it's very frustrating, and there's a lot of efficiencies that we need to identify and move forward. I also feel like I heard that there's going to be a lot of continued future volatility, and there's so much changing around us, whether it's supply, increased costs, revenue sources, you know, that we're going to have to figure out how to replace. And so I know we're going to continue to do long-range financial planning, but I'm really glad that we're doing that because to me, listening and looking at this, it's clear that those things, we need to be preparing in advance for those things because I heard that in several presentations. Maybe right, not right now, but in a few years and in the future. So I'm really thankful for that. And I just want to say thank you to all of our staff and department heads. Unfortunately, I keep saying this, the past few years, every single year, including this year, the work of our staff has been amazing, and I know it's been unprecedented and really difficult in so many ways. And I also feel like, I remember being in conversations at the beginning of COVID, and I said this recently, where I remember thinking about the decisions that we were going to make then were really going to determine what our bounce back would look like. And I feel like I'm seeing that bounce back, and I'm really proud of the leadership of our staff in really helping shepherd that and the support of the council to do that. But I also feel like we're solidifying, and I see a great path forward. So I want to thank staff for that and the department heads.
Other comments? All right. Oh, Ben?
I imagine we might end, well, I guess we already covered at the beginning, kind of next steps. Just, I've said this many times, I am really interested in how we communicate this with the public, and I'm curious, I see Kate is here too, which is great. I don't know if Katie or Kate want to say anything about what is already planned in terms of, I know there's been kind of discussions of it would be really great to have sort of a one-pager, but also like, I know Kate is one person and there's a bunch of already things. So I guess what is, what should we expect in terms of things staff are already creating to communicate with this with the public, and how can we help to do that best?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't had a chance to meet, to come up with the communications plan, but we'll do, similar to what we've done in other years, and we'll, I took notes with both budget sessions on things that you seem to be interested in highlighting, and I know Kate's here taking notes as well.
Other questions? Are, oh, Mary?
Well, when you mentioned about things, when we have the work session on the possible local sales tax, will that cover some of the debt load options and some of that type of thing?
So the first work session on the local option sales tax is really to discuss, to discuss the steps it'll take to get there. And then the ask from council really is just, are you comfortable in putting that into your legislative platform? So, because it just at all begins with the state giving you the authority to bring it to the voters. So really, that first step is just, is council interested enough in pursuing this that you want to ask legislators for the authority to do it? It's not a commitment to say, yes, we're going to definitely bring it to the voters. Does that answer your question?
Other questions or comments? All right, I will adjourn our work session. Thank you everybody so much.